State aid revenue share AA 3001. It's gonna be thirty-three thousand. It's like halfway down the second page.
It's right here. On the one thousand and second page. You don't have revenues, right? Here on expenditures. You have a revenue, you have a four million, a thousand. Which is thirty-three thousand.
Yeah.
Yeah, you got it there?
Okay.
Yeah, but we didn't have, she didn't have anything in this column, so we're.
So what that means, that purple at the bottom, the appropriated fund balance, that goes away.
The twenty-eight?
I went down through the math. Okay, looks like our total then, if we add thirty-three thousand and then take away the two eight five six two, we're gonna have three million eight thousand eight hundred forty-four. Three oh oh eight eight four four. Sorry, about that? So Jake, is that the same amount every year?
Uh-huh, sure. I don't even recall that formula. I don't know what, uh...
Oh, yeah, okay.
Maybe something's wrong online, isn't it? She's just new. Yeah, yeah, yeah. Even since we announced those.
I got all my questions answered. Thirty-eight, thirty-eight, thirty-two-nine. And then my budget to twelve. What's the average?
So this is about how many acres the budget reduces, anyway, they went fifty-nine million, a million eight hundred. That's right, and twenty-six thousand villages. Two trillion less than nine hundred.
Okay.
All three said in ten minutes. All right, so we're not gonna jump into this anyways, or anything, 'cause we, you know.
Yeah.
Speaker?
So now we'll take these out.
Yeah.
All right, I'll call this workshop to order. And I believe maybe the first order of business is, you're speaking to Sister City?
Yeah.
Right?
Yes.
Okay. I think we'll have you on first, and then we will move into the budget. So, that way you don't have to sit through all of it. If you don't want to.
You wanna stay, we'll do it in an hour.
I could be very, very short, so you guys can get on with your budget. I was, I got a, I got a call today. I don't know, is it, did you call? And said there was a workshop today and I'm not coming to it. So, I said, "Yeah," I didn't even know there was a workshop today, unless I was told earlier and didn't write, I don't know. But anyways, Carl Lawler is, he's doing something. He told me that he was writing a letter to, and he's got an application from, for Webster to fill out, to send it in. So I don't know if, and, this is something he hasn't forwarded to you or not, but I understand he's in Florida.
Yeah.
So I have not heard a word in about, about a week now, so I don't know what he's doing, and I don't know where that's going. My only other reason for being here, now that I'm here, would be to inform the mayor of what we've talked about. I don't know if you've been brought up to speed on this.
Not really.
Well, an invitation, an invitation has been forwarded to the village of Webster from a city in Ukraine. And they would want...
How do you say that? How do you say that city?
Oh.
It's a tough one.
I used to say it wrong, so I'll try to say it right. Bohoradzcheny. Bohoradzcheny. So, this city is very close to the larger city of Lwó, which has gone through many transformations. When the Austrian, when the Austrians had their empire, Austrian Hungarian empire back in the eighteen hundreds, it was called Lemberg, because it was under Austrian rule, which was German. Then, it was taken away from them, because they lost in World War I, and it became the LV, L-V-I-V. The Russians took over part of it for a while, and called it Lwó, L-W-O-W. And that's where it sits today. Still has that spelling. It's quite a nice, large city. It's very beautiful, and somewhat industrial, but it's like Rochester. The spinoff comes in the surrounding towns, of which Bohoradzcheny is one of them. So this city, that we're trying to save, has an affiliation with Ukrainian Americans in Rochester. But that's a misnomer also, because the Ukrainian Americans in Rochester don't even have their church, their main church in Rochester. It's in Arundike. In fact, the two main churches are in Arundike, one on Bridge Road and one on St. Papulevar. But, they are pursuing this sister city idea, because the influx of Ukrainian Americans keeps growing and growing into the United States, Canada, and other countries, but especially the Rochester area. There's a lot of them now, and I don't know what the exact ethnic breakdown is in Webster, town Webster and village of Webster, but I do know that there are many Ukrainian Americans in Webster. So many, in fact, that it prompted Ukrainian credit union in Arundike to put a satellite office out here. You don't do that willy-nilly, you have to have a reason. So...
You come in here by attorneys' offices. So, yeah, I know they're here.
That's amazing, 'cause they have Ukrainian-American attorneys, too. So my appearance initially was to submit the invitation to this board, from, which perceived the sister city, so that you could study its authenticity, and not say it was something somebody made up here in Webster or something. And also to give everybody time to talk about it, and see what you, you know, if you wanted to do anything. So now, Carl has emailed me, and said that he has, I'm just repeating, he has an application that I, I don't know if he's filling it out or what. And he was supposed to write a letter explaining all of this. And when he comes back, which I thought he would be back by now, that's why I came tonight. I thought, I thought he'd be...
Yeah, he sent us a copy of what he typed out, but I'm not seeing an application.
I have not seen an application, but I've seen an email.
But you got a letter that he typed out?
Yeah, we got an email from him.
Okay, well, he, I was supposed to get a copy of that, and I haven't gotten it, so that's why I'm a little over here.
A copy of the application?
No, the copy of his letter.
Oh, yes, he drafted, he did draft a letter.
Yeah, okay.
And sent that on. I, I have not heard of an application.
I'll have to email him when I get home and say, "May I see a copy of it?" 'Cause I just wanna be kept abreast. Tonight, I was supposed to have Mikhail, Michael Bobchuk, who is the Ukrainian-American fellow who is pursuing this on this end of the, of the world. He is very close to the people in the Bohoradzcheny, so that he knows every step of the way from their end. And I was supposed to be the person who would introduce him to this board, and say, you know, "Is this something we should do?" But tonight, he is coming across country from California, and he just ran out of time. So he's, he was supposed to be here today. We missed the last meeting, because he didn't know what door to come in, so he couldn't get in the place, and missed the meeting. That's what he told me after the meeting, remember? I kept saying, "I don't know where he is." Well, anyways, that's where we are.
Now, Sister City is about the size of, what, where, where we're looking at in Ukraine, versus here.
Well, we're, naturally, we're much smaller, because we're a village.
Can we call it then Sister Cities?
I would hope so, because they wanna deal with us, because they have the Ukrainian-American former mayor. Right? It's one of the reasons they wanna do this.
Well, I know, there's a significant population there.
Yes.
Yeah.
Did you teach math?
No.
They're all good at math, I don't understand why. Maybe it's in the genes.
Population's seventy-nine hundred.
Seventy-nine hundred for what?
Bohoradzcheny.
Seventy-nine hundred, well, it's not...
Very strange.
I wrote down B-O-A-J-O-R-E-D.
Yes, okay.
Tell a little more.
Maybe one of these days I'll get me one of those smartphones, I'm not so smart anymore. Okay, so that's all I can tell you right now. That's where we stand today. It's been an idea that's been presented, there's been no action on either city, or either village. It's just something that we're both, I don't know, Village, Village of Webster is, but they certainly are looking at it on their end, and they're awaiting a reply.
Is there a formality, a process to go through, applications and so on?
Well, Carl says there is an application, and I think he has one.
When's he supposed to be back?
Not sure, but I don't think that process would be Carl filling out an application.
Well, no, no, but when is he coming? Doesn't make any difference. Do you know when he's coming back?
I have the dates written on my calendar, but, you know.
Okay, because, yeah, as soon as he gets back, we'll make a sure. Okay. We get a hold of you, that way.
Well, today, still makes me think we're still in winter, even though the snow is going so on. I don't think anybody's in any kind of hurry to do anything. Let's let the spring come, so we'll all dance around.
Yeah.
What is it, the poppies? That's the national flower of Ukraine, the poppy.
The poppies.
Yeah. When they have their wheat fields, or other grain fields, barley, and rye, and so on, the whole perimeter is ringed with poppies. It's to show that the food that you're growing is for your health, or for your sustenance, and the poppies are to have beauty to go with it.
I like that, you know. I'm for it.
So thank you for letting me speak, and we'll meet again.
Sounds good.
Yeah.
Thank you very much.
Appreciate it.
Thank you very much.
Now we, now we all know.
You put a review of the minutes.
Nine to three.
Not a lot. It's all online. Yeah, only when you're on vacation, some pictures of the beach, to make it all bad. He knows how to use it, too.
Probably surrounded by family.
All right, that's a talk.
Well...
Okay.
All right, can you take a look at this tentative budget?
I wanna make sure that everybody has that correction that I brought up.
Okay, so...
Jimmy knows, she knows.
So we have an addition in revenues, that's right? Thirty-three thousand.
Right.
The appropriated fund balance, was that something that...
Well, that's...
You said it goes away, to the tune of, if we have thirty-three thousand and get rid of that, there's four thousand, four hundred and fifty-eight left over.
Right.
Yeah.
So how does that take the three million four four oh six to three million eighty-eight? Could you say eighty-eight?
What do you got?
Three million eight thousand eight hundred forty-four.
Three thousand.
Turn this in, it was zero.
Three million eight thousand eight hundred and forty-four.
Are we all looking at the same numbers now?
Mm-hmm.
We are.
Okay.
Makes better sense.
So how do you wanna go about this?
Just scan over, give us a couple minutes here.
Okey-dokey.
Probably all of them line by line.
Well, now I gotta... Was it, because it's different from the sheets I got there.
Yeah, these are updated, so just do the sheet.
Yeah, so the ones I got today are...
Right.
Oh, I find all my questions now.
Well, there weren't very many changes, so you jotted down notes that are likely to be still just as relevant.
Okay, so the whole...
Major road repairs. Just cost ash falling, everything, exactly. Well, we're, we're hopeful of continuing that our effort to do more preservation, you know, do a lot of, a lot of work, but also do a lot of preservation in there as well, but, you know, spend a dollar an hour to save five down the road, you know? If we keep the good roads good. That's including, that's doing...
What page are we on?
You're on the expenditures, the pages are not numbered, so this third page.
Third page.
Number four down on the third page.
Okay, thank you.
Three hundred seventy-eight thousand nine hundred and one.
Yeah, that was...
That's from Clover.
I think we discussed this last...
You did, though.
Oh, wait, you were here. We discussed this last...
And, the details aren't included in these copies, 'cause I had to fit it all, and it might kill too many trees, but this three seventy-eight nine eleven is Jake's...
Which one?
Yes. Right.
Then there was three oh six.
Three oh six.
Which was any of the things necessary that were...
Yeah.
Plus. And then there was two hundred and something, which was the bear bones.
Yeah, I basically broke it down, I had the want list, the should-do list, and the gotta-do list. And you're all, you know, you're obviously producing, the wish list, or the want list is three seventy-eight, and like you said, it's three oh six for the should-do, and...
Talk about that.
Should say it slower, should-do, and, yeah, gotta-do, one was two sixty-one. That basically removes a couple mill and paves off, and a lot of the micro paving. But does increase patching slightly, obviously, 'cause we're gonna have more patching, and we do less repair. And reduces crack building by about a half.
When you guys feel like you have a solid book, I do have a few things I want to comment on. I won't dive in until everybody's ready to go.
DI repairs? Or D1 repairs, what is that? Yeah, DI, grain inlets. Oh, okay. Third page, and... Eight one forty, four forty? Yeah. Yeah, that's just, that's basically, that's just the one we use for doing DI's around, around the village, you know, catch basins or grain inlets, but all, you know, where they're, there's kind of like ones that need work and need rebuilding, and, you know, continue to do, to do that.
Going on the AA sixty-four-ten, the S two hundred, the planters?
Now, we're working with the, the bid on those as well.
Yeah.
But that's for getting additional planters, were on the village, you know, throughout the village, and, you know, I know we have one that we've replaced on the island there.
Yeah.
But some additions, they wanted some for the signs, too, on North Avenue, that new sign that's up on New York Street.
Yeah.
Maybe some for there, and it was...
And that's for those to retrofit with the reservoirs, right?
Yes, yeah, and the reservoir is for some of those on the island, so we don't have to go down there and water them.
Yeah, I know, I thought that was a great idea. That's what I, okay, that is...
But the bid was talking about doing some additional ones as well, so...
Okay.
How much do they run, Jake? How many are talking?
Well, last time, the ones that we bought before, or that actually the bid bought before were, there was thirty-three of them, there were fourteen thousand, I think.
Twenty-three of them.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Yeah, they're, depending on the size of them, some of the larger ones are seven or eight hundred bucks, and some of the, they, you know, there's different diameters and heights, too, there, you can mix them up. I think the smaller ones were into the two-fifty range, but then the biggest thing was, or one of the big things was freight. Freight on them was, was a lot, because, well, they're, they're not that heavy, they're just, they can't, fit in, they're just big. They're bulky, yeah. I mean, they're heavy when they're full.
Yes.
But them, too, they're not too, too terrible, but...
Then is, Kibbleburg is still gonna be planting them, and...
Yeah, I think, I mean, you know, we'll get some information from them, but, yeah, they, they do, pretty good job, we worked with the bid.
I know.
So... Eighty-five sixty, the last one there. We remove a trimming, can you think we could trim five grand off that? No, honestly, I think that we may have...
Yeah, what, what number?
Last one?
Less.
Yeah, I think the reason that we bumped that up is there's a lot of, we treated, we have about a hundred and twenty-three, or something like that, a hundred and twenty-four ash trees in the right of way. We treated...
Oh, treating removal of thirty?
About, I wanna say about eighty of them, seventy-five or eighty of them. Sixteen, we did some more last year. The ones that weren't treated, and, you know, initially, we went through and did an assessment on them, and said which ones are worth treating, which ones aren't worth treating. The ones that weren't worth treating at that time, as soon as they showed that they're, they're dead, they're gonna come down. Ash trees get very brittle on their, when they're dead, so, you know, I'm suspecting, you know, there's, you know, it wasn't a matter of when the ash pour, or if the ash pour, get here, it'd be when, and it's here, for sure. So anything that wasn't treated is gonna be impacted by it, and then we'll ash remove those.
Did it say one that will stop, or is it just...
When they run out of food, I guess, I don't know. It's, they were switching to some other, some other trees, too. There was another one that there were probably yellow trees, or yellow...
It's been going on several years, hasn't it?
Oh, yeah, it started to issue in the nineties, I think it came in on some shipping crates, and it just was, it's just devastating. It took a while to get here, but it's, it's definitely here now, and, you think about Pontiac Street, where it comes out to South Avenue, all those trees on the south side, those are all ash trees. So we didn't treat every single one of them there, because they're pretty close together, and some of them weren't without shade, so right there, we probably, I forget how many there are, there's about ten or twelve right there, I think. So we're probably gonna have five removals right there, and ash trees aren't really cheap, you can't really climb them, if there's a dead ash tree, because they're so brittle. They dry out, they're, I had the guy, most of the companies say they're not climbing ash trees.
Well, we're on that subject.
We still have sixteen thousand right now, for this spring.
For, the, the tree trimming?
Tree removal and trimming, yeah, which is inclusive of what you're talking about right now.
I see what you're saying, yeah, yeah.
There's sixteen thousand.
Yeah, we're getting ready to go out for tree trimming now.
Right.
We trim twenty percent of the street trees every year, and that's usually around ten, ten or twelve grand. I want to see if there's over, you know, we obviously don't wanna remove any more than that.
Yeah, that's just...
And, and, you know, get, this is a guess, we don't know exactly how many we're gonna have.
Still, I'd just say around twenty-five in terms of the budget.
Those should be in good shape, if it's, you got nine grand, you spent twelve, I mean, you're still ahead of the game. Dead, I mean, if we got a dead tree there, we're gonna have to figure out where to get it from somewhere, so it doesn't make...
Exactly.
Yeah, twenty-five, more than we had, anything greater, the same as we had.
Same.
Well, okay, this is a good segue into one of, I'm just gonna dump all my comments.
Good.
On the revenue side, I wanted to be conservative with the sales tax, AA eleven-twenty. This one point five million is, it's not a conservative estimate, I just, at, if, the fourth quarter payment that we receive is similar to the first three quarters, then that's what we're gonna see for this fiscal year. But I'm a little uncomfortable, be, like, putting all our eggs in the sales tax basket. So that is one thing. This one point five million is also, it's a hundred and sixty-six thousand increase over last year. And Darryl was telling me that he would like to keep our expenditures flat, and use that difference to up the reserves. So that's one thing to consider. I also want to point out that we have a hundred, just shy of a hundred and twenty-two thousand in our Parks and Rec Fund, with another nearly eighty-three coming when Brittany Woods is finished. That should be in the coming fiscal year, and then in the next year or two, the state road project is gonna bring in another one twenty-one-ish. As far as I know, I, I don't know what we have planned for that money, if anything. No idea.
Parks and Rec is kinda limited.
It's there.
Yeah, it is limited, when you can...
Do we have anything on the horizon for Parks and Rec?
Oh, yeah, I've got plans and hopes and wishes, and, we had an engineer here a few years ago, one of the things was, we applied for a grant for the Veterans Memorial Park, doing some reconfiguration of the front side of that.
Oh, yeah, I saw this plan.
Yeah, yeah.
Okay.
And part of it, that plan is at the same time as the same engineering design that did State Road, where there's a discussion, it's a very small park on the south end, so we had a discussion of increasing that park, but it's going from two tennis courts to one tennis court, and making some improvements to the drainage and stuff as well, so...
Okay. Well, I, it is restricted, but I actu, honestly, I don't know how restricted, so I can find that out, and if there's any wiggle room for Parks and Rec to share, I'll let you know.
I don't think they can share.
I, yeah, I don't either, but...
No, I'm pretty confident, I'm saying, I'm saying that it's not... No, I'm pretty confident, I'm saying, I'm saying that it's not gonna happen, I don't think it's.
Yeah, because everything, every expenditure out of, out of the Parks and Rec fund is subject to a permissive referendum.
Yeah.
Payment has to be, um, and it has to be for acquisition of parks or land or, um.
Or improvements.
Or improvements of that kind of part, yeah.
Just something to keep in mind is there, there's, that money is in there. Okay, and, let's see, I wanted to also point out a fourteen sixty-four hundred records management, it's an expenditure. Fourteen sixty-four hundred, that was, um, a project to digitize the microbeach records.
Yes.
And that got tabled with the staffing turnover. I kept that full amount in the coming year's budget, but I wasn't sure, nobody's let me know whether we wanna go ahead with that this coming year since it didn't happen last, last time.
We started it, so.
I have a question, right?
Continue right there.
Okay, what were your thoughts?
I think we could pare that down a little bit, so.
Well, that's actually, that's the cost.
That is the cost.
Yeah, but you can't touch that if we wanna do it. And we, so we already started it, and basically it makes our document searchable, so it is very useful.
You have started that?
We, we did part of it, yeah.
Yeah, they did.
You guys had the minutes now, so then go up and, or now have to go up and pull those books onto the, uh, that's very handy.
Is that what the twelve hundred is from eighteen nineteen? Is that what the twelve hundred is from eighteen nineteen? Because there's nothing.
Uh, yes.
Right now in the current budget.
Never done anything.
Right.
So do we wanna move forward with it or what do we wanna do with it? I, I understand.
It's kind of silly to start and not finish it.
Better to have it.
One of the things, just if we're looking at totals, I know they're, you know, interesting, we're, believe me, I'm a cheap SOP, but, um.
I can tell by the.
But keeping the, uh, keeping the expense lines the same, you know, you, it's gotta be put in context and put in perspective. We have a, a couple hundred thousand dollars, two hundred and thirty thousand dollar ready grant. That's gonna make it look like the expense lines are going up, and it's gonna look like the revenue lines are going up, but the revenue line is a grant coming in and it's offsetting that expense line. So, you know, real, take that out of it, look at that separately, but I mean, it's gotta go in there, because if we're spending money, it's gonna come from a line and go somewhere. But take those guys out of there, that'll give you certain things like that, a truer picture of, of where some of those, you know, some of those pages are, some of the differences from year to year.
Right.
Is that, you know, it's an odd one-time thing that's in there.
And then my last comment, my last general comment is, um, Jake and I had an email conversation about, um, how much of the O and M accounts, the maintenance and repairs and stuff, went to each vehicle? And where was that? I printed that out. It's like, something like forty-seven percent of all the repairs.
Forty.
Maintenance, forty, went to one vehicle.
Loader.
The loader.
Nineteen ninety-four case six twenty-one B, and honestly, we invested in that a few years back with the transmission, figuring, it's been a great machine. Getting tired, you know, we're getting very tired, and we're looking at different options on a replacement of that too.
Yeah, so I, my point in bringing that up is that, um, I, I haven't gotten to a place where I can, um, make an informed advisement to you, but I do think we should, um, make sure that, that, uh, that cycle is, is maintained and that we don't kind of let our vehicles drive into the ground.
And Jake, that one'd be, uh, that one'd be, women, uh, that you try at least your leasing program thing that you.
That, that's one of the options that we're looking at, um, it's the.
Helps us with that.
It does, a lease, and that's what we're, we're starting to talk about, we talked about, we're doing a rental for the winter months only. Uh, the rentals for the winter months, seems like they're coming in like twenty-four, or twenty-two and twenty-three thousand dollars a year for five months. And we can have one for about thirty or thirty-one, uh, the way the numbers, you know, it's preliminary budget numbers, it's not hard and fast. But now we're looking at saying, isn't it better to have at the end of that lease period, have an asset that we can at least trade? Um, look at getting something rather than just strictly expense. You don't get any repairs, um, if you don't own it, you just say, hey, this one's broke, bring me another one, but you lose a little bit of control as well. So there's pluses and minuses, and I think, you know, this one's a ninety-four. Again, our money's worth out of this, and the problem is when we bought this one, it was probably thirty thousand bucks, now they're a hundred and fifty, a hundred and sixty, very common thing.
But I think the lease was a little bit harsh.
Yeah, it's a lease purchase, the way you do municipal, yeah.
Okay, so that was it for my, my general theoretical comments.
Well, hopefully we helped answer them. I guess we should be doing the, um, electronic, uh, further record management.
Yes.
Okay.
We cannot use Parks and Rec money for anything else.
Right.
Exactly.
And then, I guess, it's up to Jake and you guys how we wanna move forward with the vehicle, but I like that. That's just the, uh, least of all.
That's one of the things we're aiming to do is, is, you know, trying to get on that schedule that we started a few years ago. It was great, but March asked a question, we're able to look at it and see. Things that we replace, we don't have the minimum stuff, um, you know, we had, you know, a thousand dollars on one of the new six-wheelers, new, you know, two or three years old. Just got it out and realized that, well, that's when the wing got caught and bounced up and hit the mirror. And for some reason those, they're very proud of the mirrors and they turned about a thousand dollars for the mirror on those, yeah, it's crazy. So, you know, let's, let's start first, go around with those mid-sized trucks, so maybe we look at different options, and if they have different options on the mirrors, maybe we pick a different option on the mirror that's, even if it's an upgrade on the front side of it, maybe we just, or, you know, eighty-five dollars instead of a thousand dollars. Because that, it'd be, sadly, that happened with the, with the wing, sometimes you get bound up and they get released and they pop up, so. But yeah, I can't see, and a thousand dollars every time the wing gets popped up. Yeah, man, maybe we could add some move or something, I don't know.
The clerk treasure line and the treasure contractual book has gone down hugely. Is there a reason for that?
Which clerk treasure monitoring?
Two hundred, that would be one thirteen twenty-five, two hundred.
Oh, yes, the clerk treasure equipment, that seventeen thousand was for AccuFund.
And the twenty-four thousand the year before that?
Uh, I don't know what that was, Dave, was that also part of AccuFund?
I don't know, I don't think so.
And now, suddenly you've gone to two hundred, almost nothing, so I'm just questioning that, that's all.
Yep.
That might have been what we were paying for Harris.
Right, I'll find out and let you know.
Which I have, I've talked to Harris several times now, and they're supposed to send us a bill, and they still haven't even sent us one, so.
The other is treasure contractual?
Uh, yes, that one, uh, okay, a little history on that one. It had been used as kind of a junk drawer.
Flush drawer?
Kind of, yeah, just dump, dump some stuff in there. But the big increase this year was because we were paying Tim for his consulting through this account. And, um, the nine hundred that I left in there is, uh, really, we're only budgeting for me to need, I don't know, a couple days of help. I don't, it's not gonna be anywhere near this year's.
Um, to answer your other question, Darryl, too, Jake just reminded me, we paid for part of AccuFund in the last fiscal year.
Oh, okay.
So I think we paid half, part of it up, like, for previous and then one in the current, so that was probably that.
Okay.
Like a down payment.
Postage is very minimal at the moment, I have a question on the twenty, why did it increase in the budget for that? When it is so low right now?
For which one?
Postage, next one down.
Because we don't, we haven't sent out our taxes, tax bills.
And that will be inclusive of the tax, oh, yes, Ellen, no.
We send those out, um, and in May, so. We do get a discount though, because we have some of them sent by the ABS, which is a company that all villagers use to send their tax bills, so we do get a discount.
And actually, ABS, the postage for the tax bills, around three hundred dollars, is one of the things that, for some reason, was in that treasure contractual account.
In error, we don't know why it was put there.
Oh, wow.
So I moved it to postage.
Okay, very good.
Some others in education you plan on doing?
That's for, that's for Heather and me to go to NICOM.
Manuels, uh, thirty-six twenty-four oh two.
Okay. These are for, um, Will needs to get updated, uh, code, not code update, but.
Sure, reference standards.
Thank you, that's the word I was trying to come up with. Yeah, he has to replace his staff of reference books every two or three years, I think he said. So that's the replacement.
This year, he's really not doing much at all with a seven fifty? I mean, it's at minus ten right now, so I don't know where that came from, but.
So he didn't do anything that much here? Or still five?
Well, we can double check.
Another one we're looking at, was probably a question of yours, Building Village Hall Equipment, two hundred and eighty thousand.
What line are you looking at?
Sixteen twenty, two hundred. Yeah, that's two hundred and thirty, and that's the ready grant for closing the, um, wells down in the sandbar. It's offset, not completely offset by the grant, it's about two hundred and fifteen is I think what we're expecting on the grant on the revenue side, and then fifty of it's for, um, the roof, which I tried to leave an illustration about why we need that.
That was the building thing.
Anyway, now we need a floor.
And we're about to want to lob it to Building Village Hall personnel. That's a one hundred mine, is it?
It's a payroll.
Yeah, it's a payroll.
Yeah, it's just payroll.
Just to clean up after the ladies there.
That's for slots, yes.
I'm not.
Not us ladies.
The rental space.
You're right, Tony.
It says the state police is carpet cleaning.
They're coming this weekend.
I know.
That's inclusive of the engineering professional services. We didn't budget this year, we haven't used anything this year, but there was four thousand the year before, and what's the sixty-five hundred for projections? Uh, sorry, I'm sorry, sixteen twenty, four, forty-six, uh, four sixty.
Oh, yeah, it's buildings, it should be, um, should be engineering towards that, some of that grant stuff, right?
For the wells, you told me that that was for, for, for the wells.
Yeah, the sandbars?
Yeah, yeah.
Yeah.
So that goes with that ready grant for two eighty K.
Yeah.
Oh, that's right, that was, uh, some testing. We have, we, if the decommissioning, or if the demolition of the buildings.
Oh, right.
There's a couple different options, and they're basically a wash, one of them's to decommission the wells and leave the buildings. One of them's to demolish the buildings and decommission the wells. In the amount that you save by net demolition of the buildings, you pay because it's a bigger pain than decommission the wells with the buildings in the way going through the roof. So they're kind of a wash, but if we're to demolish the building, part of that might be, uh, some testing on there as well for, um, you know, there's, check for any asbestos or things like that, any environmental stuff you have to do.
And do we have a revenue line in terms of not giving, selling that back, are those, uh?
No, we don't, because we don't have that figured out yet, I guess, but, so there was not a revenue line, and I don't know if that, when that transferred.
Because there definitely will be one.
Yeah, the, the only, um, revenue line I think we had in relationship in regards to that was the expected grants should be in the second page, I think the state funding, the next group of them. I don't know if it's in there in the state funding.
Okay.
Yeah, no, no, I mean, we did have one for the sale of the property, you know, yeah, I don't know if it'd be in this budget or.
Because I mean, across the village to get that land, so.
Al, just so I don't forget to answer your question about the, um, spectrum. We're looking into it to see if we can, Marshall's working on it, to see if we can get a cheaper rate, and we're, we're gonna see if we can get Greenlight.
Nice, thank you.
Do you want to ask them one?
Yes, they do.
Does it come here, though?
We don't know.
Yes.
Does it, no?
Yeah, you got it, don't you?
I know, it's on platform charge.
My computer's office is pretty old, I honestly haven't been overly impressed with Greenlight, and that, once I got it to my email, stopped working on outlooks, I'm really mad about that because I hate web mail. And I'm not, uh, not overly pleased right now. But again, I think it's, it's tough, you know, if I'm trying to go really fast, but I got a really slow car, it doesn't matter, you know.
It's when your brain's slow.
No, my computer, no, my brain is quick, quick, quick.
Fifty-one twelve point four two six signs and posts.
Yeah.
Run up to eight thousand dollars, which is two and a half times what we budgeted this year.
Yeah, part of that, uh, if we're discussing the historic preservation, folks as well, we have changed some of the street signs within the village, but some of them, not street signs, excuse me, stop signs and some of those, uh, signs, but also we're looking at street signs, um, if we can do it. Yeah, historic ones are, something that kind of denotes, you know, here's, here's ones within the village. Regardless, we should change the street signs that we have, it's just saying, hey, how much is it, extra is it gonna be, we'll have to determine that, and what we can get approved, and then how much extra that might be if we do some special historic ones, um, for, you know, first areas in the village or the main. You know, I don't know if we could put them on every single intersection on the insides of the village, but certainly the main streets here.
Is there legislation that said that has to happen?
Yeah, actually, yeah, there's MUTCD, um, that's a manual on uniform traffic control devices, and that's where, you know, if you drive down the road now, especially, we discussed it the last week, you drive down the road now on a wet night, you can't see anything because the signs are so great.
Yeah.
Yeah, that's, that's what they're, they're making us do, and the federal government has their standard, members of New York State supplement, uh, to it.
Question on these rentals, educate me, five one one two point four two eight, budget two thousand, have you used anything?
Oh, that's, five one one two is a road one, so that's if we're renting something in relationship to a road project.
Like a skid scare, uh, skid stair or something like that, or?
Yeah, if we had to rent that or rent something to cut, you know, if when we're doing the, like, gutters, we'll cut along the edge of the gutter line, so if we have to rent a machine to, to cut along the edge of the road there, we don't, we don't have, uh, one of those.
So not anticipating that this year.
Oh, is that, Jake, you think that's, two thousand is gonna come into play in the spring, though?
Yeah, it's a good possibility, and it's, you know, because in the spring, we've got a little bit of stuff we're trying to do. Uh, but that's in roads, it's not in sidewalks, and we've got sidewalks to get started first.
Okay, yeah, and we have a separate rental line for sidewalks.
Is that five one four two for sixteen that we haven't used it?
Uh, there's fifty-four ten, no, five one four two, that's snow removal, that's what we were, when we originally talked about putting the rental in for the loader for the winter, snow removal for the five months, the original. for the winter snow removal for the five months, the original discussion and estimates were about sixteen to eighteen, so we had to throw something, we put the sixteen, and then that's, what's that? Not enough, and we're gonna continue to use our own, so.
Sidewalks, is, is that seventy-one forty?
Fifty-one.
Sidewalk should be. Seventy-one forty is per, I think, sidewalk.
Oh, right.
It's fifty-six or fifty-four-ten?
Fifty-four-ten.
Yeah, fifty-four-ten. There's not a rental for the sidewalk.
There's a contractual, and same thing.
Yeah.
Budgets are wrong, fully, we haven't used anything yet.
Where's that? Oh, that's, it's Main Street sidewalks, that's the community development block grant funds that we get, and, you know, we, we put in for it in February.
What are you talking about?
Fifty-four-ten, point two hundred.
Yeah, it's.
So our expected out-of-pocket I have in my notes for that line is about sixty-seven thousand.
So that's about three hundred and ten thousand, or twenty-two years. We haven't used any of the hundred and forty that we budgeted for this year, and we have another hundred and seventy-two for next year, so that's.
But every year we, we do the sidewalks in the spring, because, so I started to say, we put in for it in February, they tell us potentially in May that we're gonna get it in September or so. They have to, the county's gotta wait until what the federal budget has in it, and then the county lets us know September, October, that we, yes, they included it, and we get that funds, you know, the funds that they told us that we might get in May, and then they want it done by June, which leaves us between October and June, there's a whole lot of white stuff, and then we got a very short window, because our budget year ends the end of May, so we try to get it done in this, in this budget year, so April, May, we're gonna be jamming to try to get those sidewalks done, if the weather permits.
So the hundred and seventy-two thousand for this year is for more of that, or for, excuse me, Main Street?
What, does this come into budget?
Yeah.
Yeah, that's, yup, West Main, both sides of West Main, because those are in the.
How much do we get to offset that?
Um, we've requested, it's about sixty percent, we've requested, I think, a hundred and twenty-seven thousand is what it should be, there should be a revenue line that includes, it's not fifty-four-ten, though, is it?
No, that would be too easy.
Yeah. It should be county, federal, I think, federal ACVG, let's just get one oh five, I think, I thought they.
I got state federally.
One oh five, three twenty is showing.
Yeah, one oh eight.
One oh five.
One oh five.
Stand by.
That's what I've gotten in my notes, too, Jake, because we asked for one oh five.
Well, it is the most we've ever asked for. Oh, yeah, because we took the contingency out, so, yeah, we're looking at about one oh five on the CDVG funds. And that's, what we've got in the past few years has been about sixty percent, and I think this, last year we asked for like a hundred and eight, and we got eighty-seven. Now, those are, these are the ones that we've historically had in twenty-five, so we've been, been having pretty good success in, you know, these applications, and I think that's what we asked for. This time we're gonna ask for what we really get, what we've gotten percentage wise in the past, has been about sixty percent of the project cost. You know, and if it's project cost, what we typically do, too, is we'll try to get, try to keep those project costs down as, as much as we can, you know, obviously, when we're estimating, and we don't wanna get caught, we don't wanna be surprised, when it comes down to what we got, we'll see exactly how far we can go with what we get for funding.
For A twenty-six sixty-five equipment sales, please remind me before we're planning to sell for that fifty-seven-five? I know you've told me before, but.
Let's say fifty-seven-five?
Yeah.
Well, that's if we didn't get, we might try to sneak one of these out of this year still, because we didn't span some of the thing. If we don't, that's W one, which is a big up there with a flower on it, W two, which is one of the flatbeds, and I hadn't heard of the equal arms. My plans must argue on that one a little bit, because there's improvements, you think, in the next couple of years for some of the hybrid ones, and the, you know, all electric, what was, well, then all electric gas, but their electric then have a, you know, a hundred miles electric, then they have a generator or I'm more something, so we're gonna go back and forth, but that was a fifty-seven-five, was those three from the general side, and then the sewer side was the van.
Oh, right, the van.
The van. And we're expecting thirteen on the van, or, it's a really, really, really nice van.
Wait a minute, I don't have that in my revenue line for equipment sales for sewer?
For the van?
Is that, yeah, that's not in the numbers that you sent me, thirteen for that, or did you nut that out somewhere?
No, I think.
Thirteen thousand? You think you're gonna get thirteen thousand for the van? It doesn't go in reverse?
That's why you're a customer, not a salesperson. It's man, you're a person.
Oh, Jake.
I got a little segue to sewer.
Are we good with general?
Yeah.
No, what do you got? The rest of the house? The only little adjustment we made so far was the reduction of the tree removal trimming from five grand, we dropped that down to twenty-five.
Any savings we could find?
Yeah, well, yeah, I think Jake dropped that down.
Is that cutting off the knee, or is twenty-five in order?
He said it'll take it from somewhere else.
We could have it at zero, like gravity, ultimate tree removals, but we might wanna bump up our insurance a little bit. Yeah, that's, I mean, it's, it's a guess, you know, based on the, on the trees, and, you know, obviously, we're gonna.
I just, I wanna make sure that these numbers are really realistic.
Yeah.
You can always do a budget modification from office personnel.
Yes, yes, that's true.
She always asks, where do you want this come from? I think twenty-five, one hundred.
Yeah, I don't think it's to make it or break it, either way, so.
I got a question on storm sewer equipment. We had a seven thousand dollar in eighteen nineteen, this is A eighty-one forty-two hundred. Seven thousand in nineteen, fifteen thousand with no, nothing spent yet, and another fifteen thousand for next year.
Yeah, the storm sewer equipment, it's not technically equipment, that should be, that's the one they got on there that's gutters outside of the project?
Yeah.
So it's gutters, it's, you know, road gutters.
It's not equipment.
No, it's, it's, it's a capital line, though, because it's a two hundred line, and typically, we've always had the gutters, or it's capital, things that are over five thousand dollars, try to put those in the capital of this, applying gutters at one time, and I don't know if there's a gutter, is there still a gutter line at all?
Doesn't look that way, looks like maybe, those got consolidated when we went.
Yeah, it might be, yeah, those might have went into that, gutters might have went into there.
Just right here.
If we're doing gutters as part of a street project, it goes into the fifty-one twelve line, you know, fifty-one twelve for twenty-six, I think it is, that's major road repairs. If we're doing gutters, like onesies and twosies, or, you know, we got a section over here that's bad, that will go into this, you know, the storm sewer equipment, because there's no gutter line, and they got moved over into there.
Sewers, I don't know if this up here or not. Office supplies.
Are you looking at sewer office supplies?
Yeah, I got four hundred budgeted, and we've used four grand this year.
Well, we have, somehow we have two office supply accounts for sewer, so I zeroed out one of them and put it all in thirteen twenty-five four oh two.
What was the other?
It was only four hundred.
Oh, that had, remember how we had Accufund in, like, I forget what it was, Clark Contractual or something?
Yes.
This was sewer's share of Accufund, that forty-four, forty-four hundred of that forty-eight twelve was for Accufund.
So four hundred's accurate?
Yeah.
And then the last one, their insurance, it was fifty-five hundred, and now you're gonna use thirteen oh five?
Why do you get them?
Nineteen ten point four hundred?
Insurance.
Yeah.
It looks a lot. The budget of almost six, spent fifty-five, down to thirteen oh nine.
I never saw insurance go down before. It's positive if we can, but.
Well, yeah, especially seeing how this is expenditures. Yeah, it looks like it's ten thousand.
Yeah, I will double check that, insurance. Oh, hold on, fifteen oh five. Fifteen oh five.
Error, error.
Fifteen oh five. Seven thousand, sorry, guys.
Eighty-one twenty point four four one. What am I missing on that one? Hundred two thousand. You're dating spent four hundred.
Yeah, this is a line over on Phillips Road, and I'm still, this guy doesn't know about this other one.
Oh, sorry.
Oh, this is the one, you said it's gotta be seven grand?
Yeah.
Okay, that's a line over on Phillips Road, Xerox went through, did the camera, the system there, including some of ours that runs along, the east side of Phillips Road, from, I know you're very familiar with Xerox campus, one oh five is where the horseshoe shaped buildings are, they're up to Mitchell Dean, and it's about, we've got, what preliminary budget estimate for it right now to reline it's about a hundred grand. Uh, we're still going, looking at just a replacement, you know, top-down replacement on it, too, on the bid, and see what that is. And it's, you know, there's some deflection in the pipe, and there's some things, and that's one of them, it has to be done someday, does it have to be done today, is it? Depends on what the weather does and what the ground does, so it's pretty deep, it's about nine feet deep, so it's not prone to freeze and thaw cycles like some of the other shallow ones are. Um, it's been in there for, you know, since the fifties, so we don't frankly even know how long it's been, you know, in Xerox, with their camera, and, you know, exactly how long it's been in this position, if it's, you know. It was, we gotta, we gotta start planning for it, maybe it's something we could look at, hey, let's do fifty grand, what do I? Or do sections, or do, you know, once you get mobilization, put some away in the reserve to repair reserve, and then do the next, and then now we have it in over a two or three-year period, so. As long as it lasts, we don't have to do it as an emergency.
Emergency, so what cost, boy.
Eighty-one thirty point two hundred. We budgeted forty-three, and we haven't used anything yet, or budgeted forty this year. So it's treatment equipment?
That's for, that's a van and a mower that we budgeted for this year, or a truck and a mower, there's been some other things that have taken precedence, so, and some of it, you know, sledgehawing is some of the things that we're gonna have to move, I think we're gonna have to transfer out of that, and so we're looking to put the truck back in for next year, we, you know, delayed that, we're trying to put that in for next year, at least get that van replaced.
What's other?
Depends on what, it's a four-seventy line, depends on what the first four numbers are.
Eighty-one twenty?
Eighty-one twenty is a system, uh, out of the collection system, so that's things that don't fit into any other thing in the collection system, and let me check my.
Me, substantial, I'm just curious what.
Yeah, no, there's, there's some, we've got notes on there, because those are some of them that, that don't, don't line up nice and neat with anything else.
Other, I think, would have been a photography for that line.
Yeah, that's one for photography, yeah, photography, town line and line.
Yeah, it's fifteen hundred for photography and a hundred for line.
And we used to have lines, but when we switched to this new system, I think there's, there's set lines, right, like, what you can call things?
Yes.
Yeah, there's not, we can't, they don't have one for line or photography, or the town, town camera, certain vein, or this or that, so.
So I have updated numbers, if we do sell the van for thirteen thousand, our total revenues would be nine sixty-six, three forty-seven. And then the increase in expenditures, that insurance that I overlooked, that would take our total expenditures to nine hundred sixty-nine thousand, two hundred twenty-three. So then the new difference, the shortfall, is two thousand eight hundred seventy-six.
When you get an iron, you can't go in reverse. Object.
Maybe you'll explain this one, the eighty-one twenty four four one.
Oh, yeah, that was a line on Phillips Road that we're looking at.
Much, you're gonna miss the detail of that.
That's Xerox?
No, I'd say line from front of Xerox there, sort of line out of Phillips Road, so the grass, so we've got some preliminary budget numbers to reline that line, and it's about seventy bucks a foot. And then there's mobilization and pumping and stuff, but again, we're still looking at what is, you know, traditional replacement of that pipe is, and it's, you know, something we can say, hey, we're gonna put, you know, fifty grand in reserve for it, and do fifty grand next year, and then have enough, knowing that it's gonna go up a little bit more. You know, we're not gonna say, it's something that has to be done, and we don't know if it has to be done today, or tomorrow, but we've got to plan for it, we have, we have to, you know, get this on the agenda to, to get it done, whether it's through, you know, planning over a couple of years and doing, utilizing reserve, or saying, hey, let's, you know, let's do it, do it this year, we can fit it into the budget, because we put it in there. And again, we're, we're looking at, and hopefully we're still to have some time to get together other numbers as far as traditional replacements, and see how they compare. You know, it's a pretty decent sized line, eighteen inch line, so it's not really cheap to reline it, but, you know, it's, a majority of it's in the grass, so traditional excavation's not as bad, it was all under the road. There's a lot of cost for rehab on that, so maybe if it's all in the grass, it may not be bad to dig it, and it's not, let's say, what is it, nine, about nine feet, eight, nine feet down? So it's not as bad, it's not like it's thirty-foot deep, and it's not like it's, you know, in the roadway either.
I don't care if it's John or you, Jake, who talk about it, but in two years. two years for line eighty-one thirty four four three and eighty-one thirty four 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 chlorine and polymer, we're going up thirty-five hundred dollars. Really? In two years or in one year from nineteen to two thousand?
Which line?
I am on chlorine and polymer, eighty-one thirty four four three. You're expecting to go to seven thou, I mean, we spent a lot this year, but that's quite a jump over one year.
Still waiting on the final quotes for chlorine, uh, or, chlorine and polymer, they're, you know, I know they're gonna go up a little bit. Price per, uh, per pound, per gallon. And then, you know, it depends on, uh, you know, how much we run it with our, for the polymer, we use the polymer for our centrifuge. And, uh, for that, we, when we order polymer, we order it, uh, four drums at a time, uh, four fifty-five gallons drums at a time. And how much is it for, do you have a pin? Do you remember? Probably not, right?
Why, why in a year has, has it, have we gone up thirty, basically thirty-five hundred dollars? Geez, well.
Just, what we use. The chemical we use.
Normally you, you didn't use it. Just curious why it's gone up so much.
Yeah, we'll take into the history and the history of races on that one.
Sledge hauling to the landfill, eighty-one thirty four four nine.
Yep.
Here we are, we, uh, as of year totals, beginning of March, March, April, May, three months. Are we going from thirty thousand to fifty-three?
No, fifty-three is what's in, oh, this year's.
And that's budgeted for this year, next year is sixty, so.
Yep. Um. There was a pricing, a ten percent price hike effective this January.
What are engineering and professional services line, eighty-one thirty forty four sixty? Eighty-one thirty four sixty.
That's just engineering services for anything that we're doing, you know, down at the plant that we have to hire an engineer for. We don't have, traditionally, we've always had a few, you know, I think it was about four or five grand in there. Uh, you see when there was different studies and different things being done, there's been some higher costs. Now we've got four in here this year, we spent about fifty-three so far. So we're, you know, we're estimating, you know, we're gonna need ten next year. Uh, especially if there's some things with, with those other lines or depending which way you guys are going with everything else, we're gonna do some engineering. Um, most of the engineering would end up being into a, into a project and into a grant though. Uh, or into a, um, into a bond, you know, if it's engineering for a specific project, so. I mean, that's kinda.
Heat exchanger maintenance, eighty-one thirty forty six one. Five hundred and forty-one dollars, sixty-eight dollars. And then all of a sudden we budgeted three thousand, haven't used anything yet and another three thousand next year, so.
Yeah, and now I hear it says quote for a vice mark.
Yeah, I got a quote for, uh, um, replacement, there was some bells on it. I'm gonna have, I'm waiting on the quote price.
Replacement of bells for the heat exchanger?
Heat exchanger, yeah.
This is just like every few years you have to do a significant maintenance?
Every now and then we, I mean, as, you know, it, it may, it may happen that we have the three thousand, we might not need the three thousand, but, you know, I need, when something does break on it, I need the money to be able to available to get it.
Yeah, the heat exchanger.
And the heat exchangers from like nineteen.
Sixty-seven.
And it needs, it needs a little maintenance here. For cleaning it to, uh, the valve, I mean, it's just.
And honestly, it's not a bad thing, it's from sixty-seven, it's probably better to build than one of them you can get today. And these guys do create maintenance on it. Um, there's, it's, but it's, it's probably, the heat exchanger is probably a little bit longer than the chalkboard. Right? Probably another couple of feet longer than that and probably almost as tall. And it's, you know, big tubes and it's filled with water and the sludge gets pumped through those big tubes, um, to be able to heat it and it heats the digester. Um, and the guys are gonna go in there and clean these big tubes out, they get to take the ends off and clean these big tubes out, um, to make sure that there's good, you know, energy.
So have we ever obtained a replacement cost if these repairs aren't working?
No.
Yeah, would you replace it?
Well.
Just curious how much it costs or.
Yeah, we, that was part of the original, when we talked about, uh, in twenty fifteen, when doing the digester rehab and the energy conservation matters, one of them was looking at a heat exchanger, um, and doing some things with that, but I'd have to look back through and see exactly.
I'm just curious, like, round about what it was for replacement.
And again, the three grand, like John said, it's, it's having something in the line because if we do need it, we have to have a line to take it from. Ideally, we don't need it because, you know, they're doing maintenance or cleaning it and they're keeping the thing up. Um, there are boiler inspections that have to be done on it.
What would a valve part, what would a new one cost?
I, I, I even bought it.
Probably a lot more than ten thousand, right?
Oh, yeah. Absolutely more than ten thousand, but, but if you spend.
Yeah.
That's what you're kinda asking. Like, you're doing good, doing a good job ma- keeping it up and spending money on maintenance, but it wouldn't be anywhere near what you would, would have spent if you had buy a new one.
No, be close to, yeah, it's three grand each. But the game is it, but, yeah, I mean, it's basically just a tank. Tank, you know, maybe heat the bottom of the.
So it looks like right now we're just trying to solve for two thousand eight seventy-six, correct? To balance this thing. So if there's any room in, in the chlorine line up on.
Yeah, definitely, I mean.
If we did sixty-five and seven, we can pull up a grand there.
Yeah, the engineering service is going out at nine, you know, eight, that's a, that's kind of, that's an excellent.
Yep.
You know, it's.
So I'd like to just know if we can get this balanced and, and I'll believe that, uh. Right, but I wanna make sure you're in agreement. I was thinking sixty-five on the chlorine and seven on the copper, that's a grand there. Kind of lines, but John isn't in agreement.
Um, I mean, that's, that's fine, I mean, we can take those, those and then, that's fine, I mean, you know.
We do what we do when we come on. We gotta balance, we gotta go into the, the thing with the balanced budget.
I guess, I guess I, I, I sort of like, Jake, I, I would take it all from engineering and let me keep my chemical for chlor- for chlorine and polymer. Cause that's, that's, that's what I use at the.
Gotta use that, it's fine.
Okay, take it all out of engineering? Okay.
There's this group health insurance line.
Social Security?
Yeah.
There's a lot in there.
So we're, how much are you taking from engineering?
Twenty-eight seventy-six coming out of there. It's eighty-one thirty four sixty.
Okay.
Oh, so it's taken right out. Twenty-eight seventy-six coming out there and balance the budget. Put it on the engineering, yeah. Nice job, guys, there's not, not a lot, not to pick apart.
Yeah.
Is everybody happy? Daryl, I know we, um, we did not do what you wanted.
The what?
All your suggestions. Oh, look, we ran out of time.
Well, look at the time.
Oh, boy.
I just wanna make sure that everyone is, you know, fairly satisfied. Well, you had said generally that you wanted to take, for example, that increase in sales tax and channel that into reserves a little more. And that doesn't look like it's happening this year. Want me to see if I can wiggle a little, a little bit out of there?
You know, you, you know, there's definitely reserves I could use, so if we can work on refining our.
Three hundred, three hundred and sixty. Have you changed the line? Fifty-one twelve four twenty-five, have you changed that?
That's our major road repairs?
Yep. The three oh six.
You wanna go to the three oh six?
Yes, I do.
And how does everyone else feel about this?
That's more than it was last year and.
Which one did you write down? All the three seven eight nine eleven?
This is with the drills, this is what is needed, definitely, you know, here bones was left.
Right. I just think, y- if you leave it and we don't spend it, um, my concern is if you, you know, whittle that down too much, you're gonna have bigger expenses farther down the road because it's gonna get worse before, you know, it's not getting better on its own.
You say leave it and if we don't spend it, that's the problem. I think it's gonna be spent if we leave it.
Right, and that's probably not a bad idea. You see that.
Well, let's, you know, this is part of the process. We could look at that and try to refine that down a little bit and see if there's areas that we can, maybe we can do this, maybe we can do that and see.
Two twenty. Means in a year you've gone up a hundred and fifty thousand dollars.
What are you looking at, Daryl?
Major. So we could, we'll, look at that and see if we, what we can pare down because there is, you know, more than reserves to put things in, the Donovan's street reserves there, the, uh, return reserves and, you know, we're decommissioning wells, we're getting a grant for decommissioning wells down at Samberg. Uh, we still, we've established a reserve for decommissioning wells up in the wellfields, but we haven't really been able to contribute to that. I don't know if at the end of the year it's unbalanced up. You can look at, getting kicked over into that at some point, uh, reallocated towards those reserves, but, you know, instead we, we look at it, that's, that's the process.
Yeah.
And we get asked, you know, hey, here's what we're asking for and, you know, we can't really complain about an increase, you know, even if it's not as much as what you're looking for.
I know.
Well, we can, but not in front of you. But, uh, no, let's, let's, look at that and see what we can whittle down. That's why we kinda created that good, better, best thing.
Yep.
So.
It would be nice because we haven't done anything with Donovan commercial or reserves for that at all.
So we're good as we are and then any reduction in the major road repairs line, we're gonna funnel to reserves. Yes?
Is that what you wanna do? He's gotta pull it, I guess he gotta pull it, he pulls it out of the reserves anyway.
Exactly.
Right.
Oh, if it's in there.
So give me about a line, what's that going to do to the tax rate? Our, our budget, I mean, more than we were last year.
The tax rate? Well, this isn't assuming any increase.
Right.
Okay. So it'll be flat cap. Hopefully some.
You gotta reelect your.
I reelected, so you gotta look at that stuff.
Said you gotta reelect your co. It's gonna stay flat.
Yeah, yeah.
Very good, thank you.
So we have another meeting scheduled. Do we need it or should we?
Well, yeah, what I'd like you to do is to change some of the numbers and then I'll look at.
I'll make all the corrections.
Yeah, make the final corrections and then I think via email we can.
Yeah, and we can always just meet in our next meeting to discuss it too.
In the next board meeting?
Next meeting. Yeah, I don't think we need a private.
No, maybe that we would need it.
All right.
Or you, you keep it stable for the sixteen, cancel if you don't have to.
Exactly.
Yes, it is sixteen, yeah, cause it wasn't the seventeen.
Oh, yes.
I'm not showing up.
I don't know, if that is a budget.
I do have a, I have one question down there. On all of the, at least the majority of them in general, the per canal lines, a four percent increase. Do you wanna, uh, explain that one to me?
The majority of the, I think, oh, gotcha.
I, uh, all the non-union people got three percent. And the union people, I looked at how many of them qualified for a step increase in addition to their three percent. And then the average increase for union people, taking that into account, is four percent. So all the union lines got four percent and everybody else got three.
So in other words, um, if in the contract negotiations that doesn't work out, we would be reimbursed or have access, is that correct?
Yep.
Okay.
Well, it's, it's like Marsha said, it's four percent on average, so if, I think it was, let's see, six out of ten were at max, were only out for the cost of living.
All the sewer guys are maxed out, so they're at three percent in their budget.
And then the guys that aren't maxed out are typically the lower.
Right.
You know, obviously they're not maxed out, so it's the lower paid guys, so they're, you know, it's not the.
Oh, I understand that, but I, I have been looking at probably six of the ten villages. And they're at two percent, uh, based on the cost of living increase. Um, they're just not matching what we're doing at three to four percent.
No, and I think you, I think there, there was a discussion when the last contract was being negotiated about having it at the cost of living.
So anyway, I'm just, I, I don't wanna go into that right now. I'm just saying that if that does happen, if we were to vote on this, but yet contract changes, then there would be reserve eventually, you know, when it goes back retro to the.
Yeah.
All right.
Well, I'm trying to think about, yeah, yeah, because it's, it, it is, cause it would depend on when the contract would go. I mean, you were saying you, you wanted to give some back this year. You wanted to give some back this year, didn't you?
No.
I thought that's what I heard. Looks like the, it's the word around the, the water thing, there was a, the water.
Are you gonna adjourn this meeting?
Oh, yeah, are you gonna adjourn?
Are you gonna adjourn? Anybody have a motion to adjourn?
I'll make a motion.
Uh, second?
Aye.
On paper?
Aye.
Time's now seven twenty-nine.